Welcome everybody, councillors, those in the gallery, those that are joining us tonight. And we'd like to welcome those present to this special meeting of electors on Monday, March the 11th, 2023. And I declare this meeting open at 6pm. I'd like to acknowledge, do the acknowledgement of country. The City of Swan acknowledges the traditional custodians of the, of this region, the Wadjaq people of the Ngunar nation, and their continuing connection to the land, waters and community. And we pay our respects to elders past and present and their descendants. Just a light bit of housekeeping quickly. I can recognise many faces in the gallery, which is really lovely to see. Those of you that are attending the chambers for the first time, should you need to exit the meeting for any reason, please quietly just rise and make your way to the back at the door, just to my left here, where you entered. And you'll also find the toilet facilities just outside the door in the antechamber there. If, if you need any help, please see staff at the registration desk or any security if you require any assistance or guidance for tonight. So the purpose of this special electors meeting is to address the annual electors meeting motions, which were number thirty four to forty six that were submitted prior to the deadline. And we were very sorry, we weren't able to deal with those at the annual electors meeting. We were very overwhelmed by the amount of people who were happy to come along and submit their motions, which is quite exciting for us as a council. So tonight, we will, under Local Government Act nineteen ninety five procedures for this meeting, we're going to be determined by the presiding member. And the procedure for the public participation has been provided in the handout that you have at the registration desk. And that has the meeting schedule either in the hard copy, or you can also access the QR code on your phone if you choose not to have the paper copy, because that is also available on the city's website. Motions thirty four to forty six that were presented in writing to administration by five pm on Friday, February the second, two thousand twenty four will be considered tonight. And I'll call each elector to the podium to read out their motion. And the motion will also be displayed on the public screen up here to ensure that everyone is clear about what they're voting on. I will then request a second of for the motion. And then, once the motion has been seconded, I'll ask if there are any speakers against the motion. And if there are any, no speakers against the motion, I'll just put that motion straight to the vote. And that will make it a little bit quicker tonight to move those motions along. If there are speakers against the motion, then, you know, I'll ask the mover to speak. I'll then call for a verified elector who wishes to speak with a maximum of three speakers, four, and three speakers against the motion. Each speaker will be afforded a maximum of three minutes. And the mover of the motion has the right of reply. And this closes the debate. Again, the mover does not need to exercise their right of reply. And the right of reply is limited to a maximum of three minutes, but you don't have to speak to three minutes if you don't feel that you need to. Verified elector may rise and move without discussion, that the motion be now put, which on being duly seconded and carried by a simple majority. So this will result in a submission of the motion at once to the... If I determine that sufficient and fair debate has occurred on a motion, then I will invite the mover to exercise their right of reply and put that motion to the vote. When you register this evening, if you are an eligible voter, when you signed in, you will have received a green and a red voting card. So there, I'll get you to, when we vote, then I'll ask you to support the motion. Please raise your hand and show the green card. And then if you're against the motion, please raise your hand and show your red card as well. And each motion will be determined by a simple majority vote, and it'll be counted by staff. So please continue to hold that card up high until the count has concluded. A question?
Can we have the light on in there? So we can actually see the people who are in the gallery?
Just find out why, if there's any reason, if one light will be turned on, thank you. When speaking at the meeting, you must please use the microphones that we can all hear you provided. And this, this meeting is live streamed. And state your name and suburb for recording in the minutes. Please address the meeting through the presiding member, and limit the statement to fact, not opinion or suppositions, and not reflect diversely on council members or city employees. And please refrain from making any repetitive comment on matters that have already been discussed to ensure that the meeting can progress effectively. Can we please have a nice respectful meeting tonight? And that's respect from councillors to the gallery and gallery to councillors and the staff. And when you're invited to speak, please come forward to the podium. The meeting will conclude after we've considered motions thirty four to forty six. So move on to attendance and apologies. So apologies have been received for the meeting from councillor Pudovnik. And we have councillor Miles is here, has arrived. Councillor Ringo will be arriving shortly. And that's all we have for tonight. Oh, sorry, my apologies, councillor Jones is also an apology. I'm sure. Okay. So now we move on to motions from electors. We're going to call electors to read out their motions out aloud, and then ask again if we have a second of the motion, are there any speakers against or for? And we'll start that tonight. So we have Gurdit Mann from Dayton with motion number thirty four. Hi Gurdit. And you have three minutes to present your motion. Just need to turn the microphone on. Who's timing? Who's timing, timing?
Hello?
Yeah. Thank you. I also want to thank the councillors that have actually called this meeting. I really appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to jump straight into it. Motion thirty four, Gurdit Mann from Dayton, for issues in regard to illegal parking on foot paths on Street of Dayton, Kewisham and Bennett Springs, be rectified so users can safely access the path. For example, wheelchair users, carers with prams and pedestrians. Do I have a second there? Lyn, if you could just state your name and address, or suburb? And it's Lyn Dearing? Thank you.
So in this case, when people go for walks in the evenings, the footpaths are occupied. I've contacted the council multiple times, probably over a hundred times. And I've been told that people are only available until seven pm to monitor the footpaths. And I would like this to be an ongoing thing, because between eight to five pm or eight to seven pm, a lot of people are not home and the footpaths are pretty clear. But when we go for walks six, seven, eight, it's, it's full, fully blocked. And I personally am a user with, double with two prams. And it's extremely difficult to jump off the footpath and put, put our baby or our children in risk and then jump back on. So self-explanatory, really? The reason I picked those three suburbs are because I live in that suburb. And I pass Kewisham to go anywhere, and sometimes Bennett Springs, and I see it happening at all times. Thank you.
Okay. I'm just going to ask if there's anyone against, because if there is, then we can move forward through this procedure a bit quicker. Is there anyone against the motion? I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Can you hold them up really high for me? Thank you very much. Ten four. Is anyone against the motion? If you could hold up your red card, thanks. No one against? That motion is carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ten. And next motion we have is motion thirty five with Miss Diane Arvino from Bellevue. Hi Diane, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. And I'd also like to thank the councillors for organising this extra meeting. I'm the secretary of the Bellevue Residents and Rate Payers Association. And we've had experience with the tree planting over the last four, four to five years. So my motion is that the City of Swan employ a dedicated coordinator of the urban tree canopy programme for plantings and maintenance, and maintain a register of plantings and survival rates by suburb. The reason for this motion is that while the much needed canopy programme is motoring ahead with some momentum, it seems nobody, or no one, is looking in the rear vision mirror to monitor and maintain previous plantings. It is the hope that a dedicated coordinator will take responsibility for this and provide a continuity, which we have not had previously with the ever-changing staff allocated to this task. Lack of continuity caused the Bellevue trees to be left off the watering schedule in their first and second years, causing immediate losses. We are still experiencing issues with a blanket policy of we just water for two years, which does not take into account the species and weather conditions. More Bellevue trees have now died, which were in their third and fourth year, which would have been avoided if a coordinator had monitoring on the maintenance schedule. It does not make economic sense for the city to replace dead trees, which is the policy, when they die after three or four years, when monitoring them and applying extra water when needed is a simple remedy, as replanting requires a capital cost and two more years of watering in ad hoc locations. Eventually, the Bellevue crape myrtle trees will be drought tolerant and live for over a hundred years, but they need more aftercare in the initial five years in monitoring water needs and removing suckers. It is also apparent that Bellevue is not isolated in experiencing tree losses because of lack of aftercare. And reiterate that employing the right person dedicated to the task, who has a horticultural background and takes responsibility for the success measured in survival rates of the urban canopy plantings should remedy this problem. What is happening now clearly needs reviewing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second there? And can you just state your name and suburb, please, for the, for staff? Thank you, Diana. I'll just ask now, is there anyone against the motion? If not, we'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Twelve. And all those against, if you could raise your red card, please. That motion is passed. Well, thank you very much. And we move on to motion number thirty six, Gurdit Mann from Dayton.
Yep, Gurdit Mann, Dayton. Okay, motion thirty six, to have one or two twenty four seven rangers for the city that can deal with general noise, building noise, construction, construction rubbish, parking issues on the spot and not weeks or months later.
Yeah. That, that, it would ask, is there a second there? If you just state your name for the, and suburb? Thanks Lyn. And is anyone against the motion? If not, all those in favour, please raise your green card. Seven, all those, and anyone against the motion, please raise your red card. So motion's passed eleven, thank you very much. And next, we have motion thirty seven, Gurdit Mann from Dayton.
So for more can, yeah, I don't need to state my name and suburb again, yeah?
You can if you like, but it doesn't...
Okay. For more canopy trees in the middle of roads of Dayton and the entrances to Dayton, for example, Arthur Street to look like Main Street in Allenbrook, non-invasive root trees that do not affect the roads, currently has paving in the middle of the road. If some blocks of pavers can be removed to add trees, that would be great.
And do I have a second there? From Woodbridge, thank you Lyn. Is there anyone against the motion? No, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour of the motion, if you can raise your green card, thank you. Twelve. And if there's anyone against the motion, can you please raise your red card? That's passed twelve, twelve votes, thank you. And then we're moving on to motion thirty eight.
So, this one might sound the same, but it's not. For rangers and patrollers to monitor builders' bins. They currently do not do that on rounds. And if they're full overflowing, to alert or find the builder instead of waiting for the bins to overflow, and for litter to be everywhere on the streets, and residents to complain and only deal with it months later. For some, I just, I just want to explain this a bit, because it might sound a bit petty. A couple of builders' bins were overflowing. I reported it in November. It was looked at in February, and I got a call saying it's been looked at, but nothing had been actioned. The house was built, and that's when the bins were removed. But all the rubbish was overflowing, going onto everyone's houses on the street and the adjacent street. So yeah, I think that should be one thing added to rangers' list.
It's okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Do I have a second there? Woodbridge, thank you Lyn. And I'll ask if anyone's against the motion? If there's no one against, those in favour, please raise your green card. Nine. And if there's anyone against the motion, please raise your red card. Right, so that motion's passed, nine votes, thank you. And then it's Gurdit Mann from Dayton, motion number thirty nine.
Yep. For streets in Dayton and probably the city wherever there's most building going on, to be swept at least fortnightly to avoid health and safety issues. When we're driving, the grip is not as strong. Just imagine bikers. I've seen quite a few motorcyclists losing grip, and I've been told as well by a few of my neighbours, that when there's a lot of sand on the road, they just lose grip and they either avoid riding their bike or just take the risk. They do sweep the streets every time I put in a snap sand and solve. But I think it should be a regular thing, especially where there's a lot of construction going on.
Thank you. Do I have a second there for the motion? No one said, oh, yes. Thank you. Is anyone against the motion? There's no one against the motion. All those in favour, if you could raise your green card, please. There's nine votes and passed, thank you. And moving on to motion number forty, Miss Gurdit Mann from Dayton.
Ever since the last AEM, this has actually been sort of somewhat actioned. Push for vacant lands, especially commercial, to be built with urgency to finish the development of the suburb. There has been a thirty percent rate rise, I believe.
Thank you. And do I have a second for the motion? Thank you, Mr Ashby. Is anyone against the motion? All those in favour, please raise your green card. And that's ten votes, thank you, and passed. And moving on to motion forty one, Gurdit Mann from Dayton.
Okay. Road on Arthur Street in Dayton, very bumpy and near community centre roundabout, elbow of roads drop, road drops. It has been refilled with gravel once, but have seen transport buses dip when tyres on edge of elbow. Road isn't necessarily wide enough. Elbow of road should be developed and not refilled with gravel once in three and a half years. I just want to give some perspective there. Yep. So this is across the community centre in Dayton, and there's actually no road markings. So that road is drive as you assume where your side of the road is. And of course, transport buses are much bigger. They tend to go off the elbow, and it's just refilled with gravel every, again, three and a half years ago was when I snapped sand and solved it. And it hasn't been since. So I constantly see the transport three five three bus dipping and going back up. It's definitely a health hazard and either a road to be made or refilled every so often. Thank you.
Thank you. And do I have a second there? Thank you, Mrs, Ms Dearing. And though, is there anyone against the motion? All those in favour, if you could raise your green card, please. And that's ten votes and passed, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then moving on to motion number forty two, Ms Tanil Dutre Brabham. Is Ms Dutre here tonight? No. Okay. We'll move on then to... Can somebody else move the motions? Through the CEO. Which is, meaning if they'd sent an email through or organised that earlier. So unfortunately, we move on to motion forty three, Ms Tanil Dutre from Brabham. But I don't feel that she's here tonight. So we'll keep moving through to motion forty four, which is Tanil Dutre Brabham. But I don't think she's in the gallery tonight. And then we move on to motion forty six, Lee Symington Woodbridge. Is Lee here this evening? Oh, sorry, sorry, my apologies. Forty five has been withdrawn. And that was only just prior to the meeting, thank you. So that was motion forty six with Lee Symington Woodbridge. So that was motion 46 with Lee Symington Woodbridge. Okay, we'll have a look at the end of the meeting if we have time still. So we're going to, that is the end of the meeting? Well, we weren't quite expecting that to go that quickly. But what I wanted to just let everyone know is that if Lee wasn't available to come, or if To Neil wasn't available tonight, a lot of these motions that have not been read out tonight have been able to be carried. These can still be submitted to staff and addressed because they are operational. So these electors are not going to miss out on their motions being addressed. So we, yes Lyn? I'll just take some advice from the CEO and just see whether we're able to. Yeah, if you've got that text there, that we can just have a look and observe to see if we have the authorisation, then we might be able to do that. Yep, do you want to come up to the podium and ask the question? Just that everyone can hear it.
Just during the AEM, usually if there's available, like time available, we can actually submit motions just then and then. I was wondering if that's something that can be done today?
Okay, just via the CEO just then, because this was a special advertised AEM.
Right.
We're not able to now take them from the floor. But you can still bring those concerns to staff, and then if it needs to be addressed at a council meeting, we can do that. So we'll work out whether it's operational or whether it needs to come to council. So it won't be missed if you, if you need to email it through to staff.
Okay, no problem. Thank you so much.
Is it, sorry, have you actually got a text from her? Because I can't take one on the fly. Yeah, if you, if you can't really text her on the, on the move if she's in traffic and then sort of just preempt it, unfortunately. Because it does need to be submitted before the meeting, so... But as I said, I mean, it would be lovely to hear them tonight and have heard it from her, but it in any way will not be not looked at or resolved. It will come to staff and they'll work out whether it's operational or whether it needs to come to council. So she hasn't missed out. But I apologise that she's on her way and that we won't be able to hold that meeting up for her. Okay, well, I'd like to...
Through the chair, just to confirm that from the administration, we, for anyone who didn't move a motion tonight, we will formally respond to that still. So it's not as if, as the mayor said, there'll be no response from city, there will still be a formal response from city.
So I'd just like to thank everyone for attending the special electors meeting, and I know it went very quick, fast and furious, but next year, hopefully, we'll make it longer so that we can incorporate all of those extra motions for you. And there being no further business, I declare this meeting closed at 6:23. Thank you.